Okay, it looks like everybody's in and connected. So we're gonna go ahead and get started. If we could have the roll call, please.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yeah.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Vice Chair Morin?
Here.
Chairman Moskowski?
Here. Everyone would please join me in a moment of silence. We'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Does any board member have anything? Any questions on the agenda, or shall we adopt?
Mr. Chair, I propose that we go ahead and adopt as written.
Very good.
Second.
Seconded, if there's no discussion, after the roll be called.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Vice Chair Morin?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Chairman Moskowski?
I. Okay, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is to conduct public hearings for the proposed FY 2022 budget and the proposed tax levies for calendar year 2021. We're gonna start each public hearing with a brief presentation from the interim county administrator. Then we will open the floor to comments. Everybody has three minutes as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group. If you are representing a group, we do ask that you state so before you begin speaking. And we ask anyone who is speaking to state their name and the district in which they reside. If you wish to speak, Mr. Wolf has just put something forward in the chat that you can let him know that you wish to speak, and he will get you in the queue so that we can get you unmuted when it is your turn. You're on the phone and you wish to speak. It is star, I believe, star nine, right?
Yes, sir.
That will raise your hand and let Mr. Wolf know that you wish to speak. So we'll have that going during the presentation that the interim county administrator is going to give. And then I'll also do kind of a one and a two-minute last call so that anybody that wants to speak has an opportunity to do so. So there will be two hearings. Important note, we're gonna start with the public hearing on the budget. So any comments that you wish to make during this time should be focused on the budget. If you wish to speak on the tax rates that we have proposed for calendar year 2021, that will be the next hearing. So Mr. Hudgens, you have the floor. Again, sign up with Mr. Wolf if you wish to speak.
I would like to briefly go over some highlights of your proposal for the budget.
Hey, Mr. Hudgens, gonna stop you real quick. Your audio is not coming through very clearly. It's very, very quiet.
Thank you.
Much better.
Um, yes, first, I would just like to start with a brief overview of some of my priorities and where we're going with this budget. As always, this is a proposal, and we are looking forward to comments from the board and citizens on further direction with this budget. So start out with, one of our priorities is funding of six additional sheriff's deputies. Three of the six will be assigned to court services. These deputies were first requested, I believe, last year and were not approved due to our cutbacks with COVID, but they are overdue. And as law enforcement can attest, in court services, growing population has demanded more deputies. Likewise, we are funding, asking for funding for 13 additional full-time firefighters and EMTs. Staffing has been inadequate for years. This would bring it into adequacy up to regional standards and further anticipates growth in Central Garage and King William as a whole. Salaries for these additional firefighters would be 100% grant-funded for three years. But there are, of course, some related costs that would go into that. Among our capital improvements that we are proposing are deferred maintenance and renovations of county facilities, two paving projects, a purchase of fire and EMS equipment and apparatus, replacement of law enforcement vehicles, replacement of radios for emergency services, and public water utility projects as identified in the master utility plan. When it comes to our public schools, our proposal is to fund at greater than fiscal year 2021 levels. Right now, it's about a 1% increase in what was provided last year. We would also like to prioritize continued support of our regional partners and outside agencies such as the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission, the Monkey Regional Library, VIPSa through our South District and Bay Transit. This slide is to show our school funding from last year, or excuse me, this year with what the school is proposing and asking for with additional $762,000 above last year's levels. We are proposing 186,919 more than last year, with a variance of 575 between our proposal and their ask. To go over a little bit more in-depth with the capital improvements, you can see in the slide what the apparatus and equipment is that is being asked for with the fire and rescue, much of which is either grant-funded or county-matched grant funding. So we lose out if we don't at least match. Including the, included in this is also the vehicle replacements, not only of law enforcement vehicles, but also a facilities vehicle, the radio replacements, IT needs that have only grown since COVID has made us go more digital and virtual. Water projects, including a water tower, a new elevated tower. But I would like to clarify that water projects would be funded through utility fees and rated fees, not from the general fund. Parks and Rec requests, and county proposes, lawnmower, paving at their new facility, and fencing around the soccer field. And then preserving and improving CIP assets would be our deferred maintenance and paving at Station One proposal. And like I said before, we look forward to your direction, any comments that you have and what the citizens of the county have. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wolf, do we have anybody that has signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. Great. All right, I saw Terry pop in. So Ms. Stone is on the line. She wishes to speak. Let's go ahead and get her unmuted again. Let's, you know, everybody that's on here, I know we've got a lot of participants. If you wish to speak, you do need to let Mr. Wolf know that you want to speak in the chat. And he will get you in the queue so that you can be unmuted when it is your turn. Again, I will do, you know, a last call when we've wrapped up anybody who has signed up. But let's, if you, if you want to speak, please sign up to do so as soon as possible. Thank you. If Ms. Stone is unmuted, she may begin.
Right, Mr. Chairman, board members, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak tonight and advocate for the school board budget. And I appreciate your time. You participated in their joint meeting. And I certainly appreciate increase, any increase in the budget. But I do want to make the distinction that the fiscal year 2021, which is our current year budget for schools, is over 462,000 less than fiscal year 20, last year. So while there is a proposed increase of over 100,000, that still results in next year, fiscal year 22, being over 350,000 less than our last school year. So you can imagine as expenses are increasing, inflation, everything else, we're trying to keep up with those increases with a budget that is decreasing as opposed to increasing. I also noticed there were no school capital projects included in the capital project list. And I know that there's not a formal process for that, or there hasn't been in the past, but it's very important that we do that. But while I'm talking about the school operating budget, as you know, the General Assembly approved budget includes a 5% salary increase over the biennial for instructional staff. That 5%, the state share of that funding is 400, over $445,000 for King William. If King William does not implement that pay increase, then we leave those funds on the table. We forfeit those funds. And within the region, we look at our neighbors, West Point, Essex, King and Queen, Hanover, all of them are accessing those funds. We did not give a pay increase to instructional staff in the current year. And because it's a biennial approach, then that means in order to catch up and to capture those funds, we have to give the 5% increase, or at a minimum, you can prorate some of that, you have to give a 2% increase. But as you can imagine, it's going to be increasingly more difficult to retain and recruit our new teachers and retain our teachers if all of our neighbors are giving pay increases and we are not. And when we look at the current starting salary for the town of West Point, it's $46,826, where King William is $45,021. The town is already paying 1,800 more a year than we are starting. And that increases. When you get to step 15 or year 15, the town is paying $5,928 more dollars a year than what our teachers are being paid. And you may not know, but there is a national teacher shortage. Colleges and universities are graduating fewer and fewer young people with teaching degrees. And so while we may not feel it today, because, you know, it will take some time for that to work its way through the system. But as some of our more seasoned teachers start to retire, it's going to become increasingly difficult to hire and replace those teachers. And if we decide at that point in two or three years, okay, we now need to increase the pay because we don't have teachers to hire, it will be too late to capture that state share of the funding. So if we don't capture it this year, it's gone. So I strongly advocate for the county budget to fund, fully fund the school board request to ensure that we can give our instructional staff that pay increase. And I also want to point out that we were one of the only, one of the very few divisions in the state that had our teachers working face-to-face, albeit hybrid for some period of time.
10 seconds left. Yes, please.
Okay, so I think I have covered most everything that I want to cover. I do want to point out for the firefighter funding, those grant funds of 13 positions, that funding typically, when it goes away in three years, you typically have a commitment that you have to hire them full-time and keep them indefinitely. That will be a huge expense. And so we should plan for it now, and I wouldn't want to see that come out of school budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wolf, have we had anybody else to sign up?
Yes, sir. One more person has, Yvonne Broaddus, and then we did just have someone raise their hand.
Okay. All right, let's get Ms. Broaddus unmuted and ready to speak. When she is, she can begin.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak on the budget. I want to say that listening to Ms. Stone drill down into the particulars on the school budget, I fully support her contention that we need to fund our school adequately. And that includes those raises for our teachers. This is quality of life issues for King William County. And not only do our current residents deserve the best education that we can provide them, it is also going to be very essential to the growth of this county in a forward-moving motion to have a quality school system that, that provides quality education for the kids that move here. I too support wholeheartedly funding the school budget and in a way that not only we make up for that difference that, that we started this year's with, but also with funding for the pay increase for our teachers. And I agree that pay is fundamental to getting and retaining quality teachers. And I know this firsthand. My daughter is right now a senior, an early education degree at Liberty University, and she will begin her career as a teacher within the next few months. And I would love to see King William County be, be the forum where she could bring her, her education and, and goals as a teacher to, to fruition. But gentlemen, I, I again just want to say that I wholeheartedly support fully funding the school budget. This is quality of life during the pandemic. We gave them all the accolades for all their hard work, and they were essential personnel. But now, when it comes down to the wire, we need to put our money where our mouth is and show them that they are a valued, contributing, essential part of our community. So I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you so much, and I look forward to, to you gentlemen rising to the occasion and, and funding our school system. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Broaddus. All right, Mr. Wolf, whoever is on the phone, looks like number 315-408-3079 would be next up. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, let's get them unmuted and ready to speak.
Yes, this is Raymond Carter with West Point. Um, I'm looking at the Virginia Department of Education, which is DOE, virginia.gov. Schools get additional federal funding for Native American students under Title VI. They also get Title I, Improving Academic Achievement of Disadvantaged, and Title II, Preparing, Training, and Recruiting High School Quality Teachers and Principals, and Title IV, 21st Century School Grants. So why are we asking for additional money when the Department of Education sets aside this type of grant as long as the federal government also, under FEMA, sets aside grants for firefighters, first responders, and for law enforcement to upgrade their equipment, including radios? And yet, we are here talking about raising taxes on the populace to cover this and when we're not looking at external funding. This, by the way, does not stipulate that it's a cost share or match program. That's what I would like to know. We already saw $235,000 request for a parking lot with no other, no other vendors whatsoever being solicited for their quotes for a fire truck that costs $20,000 in repairs for general maintenance. Our tax dollars are funding the county, and we understand that. There needs to be more fiscal responsibility within this county for our tax dollars. And I'm gonna end it with that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Wolf, is there anybody else? Open my seat.
Yes, sir. Yep, one moment, please. Let me get him.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow Board of Supervisors, or Board of Supervisors. I'm speak, this is Steve Tuppence. I'm the chairman of the King William County School Board, and I am requesting five minutes to speak this evening on behalf of the school board.
Objection. I'll allow five minutes to Mr. Tuppence.
Mr. Chairman, can we get two, two different people saying five minutes? Because that's, we've already had five minutes from Ms. Stone for the school board.
No, I was timing Ms. Stone. She was at like 3:15 when, when we were up.
Okay, thanks.
After I gave her a second warning, she, that, that last bit went to about 3:15. So no, no one's taking five minutes up.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood, for trying to, to stick to the, to the rules. I appreciate that.
That's all it was. Nothing against you, Mr. Tuppence.
Understood. Um, I think Ms. Stone presented very well the situation that we are currently in from a funding perspective that the county administration's proposed FY 22 budget is some $350,000 less in revenue than we receive from the county in FY 2020. In our current year of FY 2021, we are receiving $462,000 less from the county than we did in FY 2020. In the last financial reports that we received from the county, FY 2021 revenue was outpacing the projections that former county administrator Ms. Tassinari had put together for the FY 2021 school budget. So the FY 2021 school budget current year, we took a conservative approach, knowing that the pandemic was going to hit. We did not know how it was going to impact sales tax revenue. We did not, we did not know how it was gonna affect the mules tax. We didn't know how it was gonna impact any of the revenue that is allocated to the schools based on the split levy. In FY 21, year-to-date, we are showing that those revenues are outpacing what the original projection was. So there will be a surplus at the end of this year on the county side that has not even been allocated to the schools for FY 21. That will be a carryover into FY 2022. But this is, is, is much larger than just the funding of the school systems, gentlemen. This is the, the future of our county. This is what we believe in as a county. This is what you, your long-range planning for the county will be. At the rate that we're going, i-if this, if this, if the administration budget were to stand, as Ms. Stone had, had mentioned, we are going to become, it's, it's gonna become more difficult for us to rec, to recruit high-quality and high-talent teachers. And it's also gonna become more difficult for us to retain those that we already have within the school system. So we, one needs to ask themselves, if we want the county to continue to grow, we need to make some fundamental investments, not only in education, but into other infrastructure within the county to ensure that we have the capacity that is, that is needed. I applaud you for going after the grant for fire and EMS because those services are needed. And I applaud administration for looking at the growth. But we also need to take a look at it on the education side. If our school system begins to slide, you won't need the additional fire and EMS. You'll be overstaffed in fire and EMS because folks will not begin or not want to move to King William. And, and I hate to say, but we are at a tipping point in education as far as salary scales and that are go. We, we're behind West Point. We're behind Hanover. We're behind Henrico. What do we have to attract young, young teachers to King William? What do we have to attract them? We have nothing but salary. We don't have the amenities that a Hanover has, that a Henrico has, that a city of Richmond has. I'm not saying that it needs to be, that we need to have all of those, but we have got to entice those that are graduating to want to come to King William. And I, I implore you to, to take a look at the county administrator's budget. The money's there. The question is, are you willing to appropriate and amend the county administrator's budget to allow us to access those dollars, to keep pace, and make the investments that are needed in education so that we can continue to move forward as a public K-12 institution and continue to provide one of the largest services that the county provides its citizens? And, and this is really, in, in my opinion, a gut check for the board as to whether or not education is a priority in King William County.
Mr. Tuppence, always hate to interrupt, but you got about 10 seconds.
I, I will conclude my comments there, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thanks as always, Mr. Tuppence. Mr. Wolf, do we have anybody else?
Yes, sir. Not at this time.
Okay. Well, then, I'm going to do what I have been doing for the last several meetings on Zoom, which is just to allow anybody else. I'm gonna do a one-minute call. Anybody who has signed up at the end of that one-minute call, we'll allow them to speak. And then at the end of that, we'll do one more. And then we'll go ahead and conclude the hearing if no one signs up during that window. So we're gonna do a one-minute countdown. Anybody who's signed up at the end of that will get an opportunity, and then at the end of that, we'll do one more.
Mr. Chair, did Ms. Walker, is she on the list? I see where a name popped up.
It just came in as he was announcing the one-minute countdown.
Oh.
Travis, you're muted. Travis, you're muted.
This is internal mic muting that always gets mixed up. So yes, if you want to sign up, please reach out to Mr. Wolf in the chat. We're just about at the end of the first one-minute call. Let's see, we have one that has signed up. We'll get Ms. Walker an opportunity to speak. Okay, let's get Ms. Walker unmuted and ready to speak, please.
Hello, Amanda Walker, District 3. I would just like to ask for more transparency in this process. As far as I know, the budget was not published or provided to citizens until today, the provoked, proposed budget. I mean, most of us work, so how we're supposed to look through a line-by-line budget the same day as the public hearing is beyond me. If you want actual feedback and input from the residents, you need to give us time to review the information. I have yet to see a line-by-line budget for the school board or proposed budget. So I just, I don't really, I mean, I, I support the raises. I do have a lot of questions, but I don't think you guys have given residents adequate time to look over this information or even provided all of it. And that's all I have to say.
So this, this will definitely not be the only opportunity for input. The, that's a big document that, that takes time to prepare. We, we've not had it more than a few days. So it, it's a lot to go through. It is basically a state-mandated timeline and how we have to do this. So again, we've still got weeks left in this process. As we deliberate, we'll take input tonight. Take input going forward all the way up until the, the day we adopt. So if you haven't had a chance to review adequately yet, please continue to review and provide your input as soon as you have it. We have, I see one more that's signed up. If we can get Mr. Calhoun muted and ready to speak, please. We have, I see one more that's signed up. If we can get Mr. Couch unmuted and ready to speak, please.
Good evening. Chris Couch, District Five. Uh, my proposal is not really something that has significant, uh, financial impact to the budget, although it would save about 6% a year, uh, on one line item, but it would yield many other benefits. And basically, I've taken a look at all of the legal invoices from the last 18 months for the services that provide to King William by our county attorney, uh, law firm, Sam Anderson. The 18 months, I believe, represents a good amount of time for a baseline. And what that actual data does yield is, on average, our county workload for legal services is only about 46 hours a month. And for those 46 hours a month, King William is paying about $320 blended rate for each of those hours, plus all the expenses. When I look at the detailed, uh, services in these invoices, many of the tasks performed are operational or administrative in nature, and some seem even as simple as just pushing paper between people. It's my belief that this work can easily be done in-house, does not require the services of a professional services law firm. We're dealing with a team of legal experts that even with their specific expertise, still seem to spend a fair amount of time researching and discussing with co-counsel. And when that happens, we're paying $650 an hour. Our annual budget is public information, and it basically becomes a finding the hours, uh, exercise at a public services firm. These fees that we pay to Sam Anderson do not stay in the county. We even have to pay our county attorney for his precious time and travel expense to even come and visit, visit us in King William. So the alternative is using the Commonwealth attorney salary as a benchmark, the same price. We pay Sam Anderson for about 40-some hours a month. We could hire an in-house attorney and get 40-some hours a week. While the cost savings is positive, the benefits, I think, are even more significant and at least requires to look into this. Through an in-house counsel, we'd have someone who lives in King William or nearby, thereby having an invested interest in the county, uh, in the community. It'd be nice if we could find someone with experience as a corporate or real estate attorney who understands operational procedures and best practices for a for-profit business and can share those, uh, experiences with the county administrator, helping our county government run more like an efficient business. It would be someone who has a presence in the office and provides some much-needed leadership in the administration building. And the county attorney that could provide unbiased advice as a board supervisor by completely removing the motivation to incur billable hours. We've already mentioned, basically, legal work is the majority of what happens, and I believe that can easily be done in-house, and we can still leverage outside expertise as required. This change would result in a significant increase in the availability of legal services that were provided at the county each month. It would be a 262% increase in the number of working hours a month and a 74% decrease in the cost of each of those hours. With this change, we could save money and also have an in-house county attorney who has business sense and can perform the legal service, not a law firm county attorney whose business is in providing legal service. I think we'd also have an attorney who's a regular presence in the county administration building versus an out-of-county one who only comes to King William when we pay time and expense for him to visit us. I believe that the benefits outweigh the, the costs. I think it can take time to, to put in place. Uh, but I think we should at least start looking into this option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. All right. I don't see anybody in the chat. Mr. Wolf, is there anybody in yours?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to start one last, uh, one-minute call. If there's signed up at the end of that one minute, I will, uh, conclude, uh, this public hearing and we'll move on to the tax. Thirty more seconds. Anybody who wishes to speak, please sign up with Mr. Wolf. Okay, that will conclude the public hearing on the proposed FY 2022 budget. Thanks to everyone who spoke during that time. We'll now move on to the public hearing on the proposed tax rates for calendar year 2021. Uh, Mr. Hudgens, you have the floor.
Thank you. What you see before you is our proposed, uh, tax rate for fiscal year 22. It remains unchanged from fiscal year 21. Um, I believe there had been a discussion last year about lowering the tax rate, but that was only in connection to the reassessment. Uh, without a reassessment in place, we are, uh, left with the only option of remaining the same. And I, we are open to your comments.
Okay, uh, so what you see there again is the proposed tax rates for calendar year 2021. As Mr. Hudgens pointed out, we were entering the period of the reassessment. Um, if the reassessment had come in, uh, higher, which it would look like it was going to do, uh, we would have been lowering that rate, but since the reassessment was not accepted, we're proposing keeping the rates the same. What this means for you as a taxpayer is that your taxes are not going up. Not proposing any increases on, uh, any of the rates on, uh, the real estate, personal property, machinery and tools. Uh, any of it at all. So, uh, we are open to your comments. Um, and we will go ahead and open this public hearing now. Uh, just as before, individuals will have three minutes. Uh, somebody representing a group will have five. If you are representing a group, please state so before you begin speaking. And all individuals, please state your name and the district in which you reside. Uh, again, comments, uh, should be, uh, pertaining to the proposed tax rates for calendar year 2021. Also, same as before, sign up in the comments with Mr. Wolf. If you wish to speak, go ahead and open it now with a, uh, a two-minute call. If you want to, uh, speak, please sign up. Okay, that first minute is up. So we'll do one more 60-second call. Please, if you wish to speak, sign up with Mr. Wolf in the chat, star nine, if you're on the phone. All right, Mr. Wolf, I don't have anybody in the public chat. Is there anybody, um, that's privately messaged you?
No, sir.
Okay, then we're going to go ahead and conclude the public hearing on the tax rates. So it, this time, I usually reserve, um, a, a few minutes here for any board member comments on, uh, you know, thoughts so far. Obviously, we haven't had a ton of time with the complete document. We have had some time with the broader concepts, I think. So, uh, any comments, um, that anybody from, uh, the board members, uh, any of the board members want to make it be good? I'll do what I normally do at our Zoom meetings here, and I'll just go in the order you appear on my screen here, which will start with Mr. Greenwood.
And like you said, it's, uh, just like everybody else, it's kind of hard to figure all this out. A little less time, but, uh, as you say, this is just the first meeting, and there's many more to come, plus our all-day work session. And I would like, I know staff is going to do this, but I just wanted to make sure that we have all this information. Like I said, uh, we had the school board pre- presentation where we're told certain things. And like I said, we've gotten lots of emails. If we could have the exact numbers instead of all this not knowing for sure what it was, what it wasn't, if we can have what it is, what matches there are, everything we need to know on that day. So we have a, a good thing to work with, uh, to make our decision on that all-day work session. I would appreciate that. And that's all I can say for right now. It seems like we've gotten lots of comments for the schools. So, um, if anybody has any concerns, uh, my constituents, you can call me, send me an email, let me know. Cause like I said, that's how we try to, to figure out what everybody wants. So, uh, thank you very much.
Mr. Hodges, you're up next.
I don't have a whole lot to add, really, although you pretty much touched it. We've got a long ways to go. And, uh, we need to do a lot more review before we make decisions. And there will probably be some cussing in some different areas then, uh, to make this work. But we're going to do the best as we always for the schools and everybody else, just like always. And we will try very diligently to, uh, get this completed and, and to satisfy our requirements. And that's about all I have.
Mr. Moran.
Sir, uh, 51 participants, I believe, at top this evening. Appreciate everyone's interest. I would state that I'm a strong proponent for matching, making sure that our teachers and staff get their, uh, pay raises this year. I think they went through, uh, an awful lot this past year, uh, to excel the way they did. Incredible challenges, and they met them. So I'll treat it as a reward, whatever, uh, incentive to stay and keep our school strong. I would like to ask the staff to run a, uh, an exercise on dropping, uh, the property rate to .85 just to see what that, those numbers look like. Uh, would love to see that reduced, understand that it may not be possible, but I would like to see the exercise run. That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Garber, I imagine you know that means that you're next.
Well, kind of. I'd like to thank everybody for, uh, tuning in tonight. I'd like to thank the people that participated. And just like everybody else has already touched, this is, uh, we still have a lot of work to do. A lot of this, most of this stuff can change. And, uh, we need input from our constituents, and we, all of us, I'm sure, greatly encourage them to call us and let us know. I think all of us have had some emails already. So, uh, anyway, appreciate it.
Um, I'd like to, to circle back to what I said earlier. This is certainly not the only opportunity for input. Um, the budget, the complete document, any of you that have, that have viewed it in the past or maybe that have viewed it already this year for the first time, um, is a dauntingly huge document, and it takes a lot to get through and, uh, and, and to really understand. Um, and even, you know, nine years into this, uh, it, it takes some time for me to sit with it and really wrap my head around it. So, uh, you know, do take time to review it. Um, if you have comments on, uh, you know, broad topics, um, you know, supporting education or supporting fire and EMS, or supporting any other administrative initiatives that we have, um, you know, please bring those comments to us. If you have questions about particular line items in the budget, we're happy to answer those questions to, to the best of our ability or refer to somebody, refer you to somebody that can answer that question. Um, it's, uh, you know, it, this is one of those, it takes the village type of things. So, uh, it, it's early days. This is a good opportunity to, to get some preliminary comments from people. But, uh, but it is, it is certainly not ever, again, up until the day we adopt. Um, we are certainly willing to hear, uh, your input. Uh, I've stated before, uh, that, that I do support, uh, doing everything that we can to make sure that we're maximizing state dollars when it comes to, um, you know, paying for quality teachers. So certainly support doing everything that we can to fund that. Um, you know, obviously, we've got a lot of needs that we are trying to fund. And, um, you know, Mr. Moran stated his desire to see, you know, if we can, the tax rate reduced. But even with the tax rate as it is, uh, it's difficult enough to fund, uh, everything. So again, um, you know, when you're looking at things you want to advocate for, look at that list of priorities that Mr. Hudgens had in his, in his, uh, first couple of slides and understand that, um, you know, to fully support one thing probably means less than fully supporting another important thing that, that we've got that we need to do. So, uh, it's all a balancing act. Um, it's our job to, to balance that act with your input. Um, so thanks to everybody who came to listen. Thanks to everybody who came to speak. Um, and, uh, we look forward to, um, you know, continued input. Um, we do have a question here. What's the timeline for the approval? Our, it's the 26th is our proposed date for adoption, correct?
Correct.
Right, okay. So, uh, the proposed date for adoption currently is, is April 26. We do have a work session, uh, next Monday. Well, we'll talk about budget as well as some other things. Then we've got our all-day work session that Friday, uh, where we will really drill down on some line items and, uh, and, and work this thing out to, to come out with a, uh, a proposal that I think fully reflects the direction that the board wants to go. And then, and then, you know, be willing to receive comment on that up until we adopt. Just moving forward, one thing for, for everybody to hear, we're going to start to transition back into in-person meetings now that the gathering restrictions have been lifted. Um, what we're, what we're probably going to do is conduct this, this next work session virtually. We'll conduct the all-day, uh, work session in person with the plan that we will conduct. Then the, the regular April meeting, uh, in person. We'll continue to have a Zoom option for both public and board members who would rather stay remote, uh, but we'll transition back to that. Um, throughout the month, uh, we'll continue to be cautious and, and take all precautions to keep everyone safe. But I think, uh, I think the time is right now to transition back, uh, into a more, uh, normal way of doing business. So we're looking forward to that, I know. Uh, anybody have anything else they want to add from, uh, the board or from our, our administrative staff? I'll take the silence as a no. Uh, okay. And with that, I think we're ready for a German if somebody would make the motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to the meeting.
I'll second, second.
So eager. Uh, color roll, please.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Vice Chair Moran.
Hi.
Chairman Muskowski.
Hi. Thanks again, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.